It is now six o'clock.
Cole is on one side.
So we're calling the meeting to order. I would like everyone to review and accept the agenda. So anybody have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or subtractions that we want to add to or delete from the agenda? Hearing nothing, we'll move forward with a vote. All those that approve the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Sentions? Okay, we have an agenda, thank you. Communications with parents, citizens, and staff. I don't see anyone here to talk to us. Is the let's talk thing after later?
It is, but you can mention it here.
So I'm just, I had, we had two let's talk, and I didn't forward them because one was just asking what time the bus was going to stop for their particular child. And the other one was asking-
Which you knew.
Which I knew, I know, I knew where to get it and I sent it off.
You wrote an incredible response.
And the other one was about a student, not a, not a student that goes here, a homeschooling student who wanted to participate in sports, so I sent out the email that just said, "Please contact Steve Keith." And anyway, so I did not forward those on to you, but that was the gist of our- And those both happened on the first day of school. So.
Now, there's the text ability now too?
There is the text ability, yes. Yep. I haven't gotten one of those. And I, you know, I might not answer it because I won't recognize the number. So, the next thing on our agenda is board professional development, which corresponds to our policy 3.0. Our PG 101 board training, we are looking, if you haven't RSVP'd, that is September 15th, from 10 to 5 at the Lilac Inn. So if you're planning on going, please let Jean know now or after our meeting.
I am concerned that we have nine out of 18 board members. Have you not RSVP'd?
I believe I have.
Oh, okay, I'll say yes anyway.
Okay.
I'm very excited about it.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be great. I think it's gonna be great.
It's in my calendar.
Awesome.
When you say you're concerned, is that too many or too little?
I'm concerned that's only half.
Okay.
And really, we want, I-
It's Sunday.
We do have two people who absolutely can't, and they've already said so. And then we have nine people who said that they could, but that still leaves a few people. It'd be good to know to wrap up your plans. If you're not able to attend, then there is a four-hour online module that you can take. It's not, you sit down for four hours, it doesn't work that way. It's eight different modules for about half hour, forty minutes each. And we'll assign that to those who can't make it, but the more who can be physically present and having the discussion, the better. So if you have not RSVP'd with Melinda, please do so. I did not ask her for that list, I didn't bring it with me.
And I'll just put in a plug, we went to a session that this woman did at the conference we attended in Quebec City, and she was really great. She was very inspirational, she kept our attention, she makes her points really clearly and well and-
And we are asking you to give up a Sunday. I mean, we do realize that that is like giving up an entire Sunday.
Bonnie's gonna teach us to juggle.
That's right, she's gonna be our comic relief. And-
I'm gonna be at a wedding in Connecticut.
Well, that's a problem.
Well, we'll video you in, so you can teach us how to juggle through some video. Alright, so-
We'll juggle at board meetings.
So, the next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda, which is policy 4.3. Now, a couple of things I want to point out about the consent agenda. From now on going forward, you are going to see any policies that are for action, meaning that we need to adopt something, or anything we are rescinding, in the consent agenda. So it's very important that you read this stuff beforehand, or when I call for a vote on the consent agenda, you ask me to pull it off. So, and tonight, you'll see that one of the policies for action, actually the only one, is our class size and school viability policy. And I would like to pull that off. Yes, sir?
Question on personnel changes?
Sure. Yep, we can do that too. Okay. So, other than that, can we get a motion for the consent agenda, having taken off the policy for action and the personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Oh, wait, there's never discussion, sorry. I'm gonna say that, just keep reminding me. So all those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstaining? Okay, great. So first thing that we pulled off was the Otter Valley Unified Union School Class Size and School Viability Policy. The reason that I wanted to pull it was because we are, our next meeting on September 18th is supposed to be completely geared towards task force, and we are potentially going to have at least five staff and student ambassadors there. So I'd really like their input on this, and so I would like to table it to our next meeting for their input. Or is everybody okay with that?
So we're not actually gonna put it back into the consent, we're just taking it out?
We're taking it out completely.
It's not the first reading.
Well, yeah, or we're just tabling it. We're gonna table the second reading.
But I'm saying-
Yeah.
It's not gonna be the first reading, the first reading will happen next time.
Yeah.
There has to be two readings, right?
That's right. Yep. Okay. Alright, now, personnel.
I think I noticed that Josh Hart was listed in OV as an outdoor education person? And that's a, is that a new position?
It's a change in classification of his position. Josh has been working on a non-union personnel contract for the many years that he's taught for us. He had approached us last year about the idea of pursuing his teacher certification, which is to our benefit, because right now, we need to make sure that we're pairing him with certified teachers, and this actually would free up some staffing. We are happy to support him on doing that. He applied for a provisional certificate, and he received it with a two-year plan to finish his licensure. And so we're really, I'm really pleased to bring him forward. It's kind of a little bit of a velveteen rabbit story for me. He's been doing the job all along, we love him. He is the program, and I'm pleased that he is taking this next step to get full licensure.
Changes for people who may not know, could you say what program he's-
Sure, Josh runs the Muslammu Outdoor Education Program, which is our experiential learning program.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? So, so, we need a motion to approve the personnel changes. Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the personnel section, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstaining? Great, thank you for that. So, we will move into the incidental information, which is our policy 2.8. Need my glasses, sorry. So superintendent's report.
So, you have a written report. I think you've kind of already covered the stuff that's in it, but I would like to present to you, if I may, the climate survey results. You have a copy of the PowerPoint in your packet, but I also have it up here. And I won't, it won't take really long unless you have questions, but I just think it's good for both you and the community to see the climate survey results. So last meeting, you actually got one-pagers on what staff, students, and parents, the summary pages of the results of staff, student, and parents. So this presentation goes one step, it goes deeper. So the one-page summaries that you got actually were the quantitative results, and these are the qualitative results. There were hundreds and hundreds of comments that came in, not just, you know, A, B, C, D. And we spent the summer analyzing the comments and looking for themes, and so that's what this report is about tonight. So, one of the things that I was most pleased with was, since my vision really is a cohesive team that supports students, I was really pleased that 88% of our faculty, and let me back up, half of our faculty took the survey. We have 400 faculty, employees, sorry, it's not just teachers, employees. We have 400 employees, 207 took the survey. So of those 207, 88% noted that they enjoy working for the SU and would recommend working here to their friends, which is, feels good, that's great. Also sticking with staff, they feel strongly that the community supports education in RSU, that our education is better than or equal to neighboring districts, that we operate as a team and work hard to find ways to improve, and that they help out each other, which is another nice climate piece of data. We had very strong responses around safety, feeling safe from the faculty, from the employees, agreeing they have materials and supplies and training needed, and that they feel valued by the community. And 88% expressed pride in their school, with 96% feeling that their work contributes to the success of our schools, which it does. So it's good to know that they feel that, and that it's personally satisfying. And 81% feels that the work that they're doing is reasonable. And I'll be honest with you, that was a high number, because being a teacher in particular today is getting significantly harder and harder to do. There are more and more things that teachers are being asked to do. So I was pleased with 81%, but I do recognize that, I think that's mostly because they're getting the value back from the community, but it is, it is difficult. So then we took a step back and looked at all three surveys. And again, we had 200 employees. I don't have the exact number of parents, but it's on your one-page summary. Students, we gave the survey to 4th to 12th graders, and approximately 2/3 of those kids took it. It was a lot easier at the elementary level, they were, they could take it all together in a class, but the high school kids, it was a little bit harder to capture. But we had a good representation, so 431, I believe, students, grades 4 to 12. The challenge is to be the best we can be, and it is important to recognize what we do well, and this survey had many areas that we do well. And it's also a good tool to recognize what we can do better. Where can we continue to improve? Where should we put our focus? So based on the themes in the survey, we are putting our focus in the areas of bullying and discipline, adult-student relationships, parent engagement, school and SU pride, and academic depth. That doesn't mean that they're horrible, it means that these are areas that we feel that if we focused on these, coming from the themes of the qualitative comments, that we would have an even better educational system. So let's look at each of them just a little bit. In digging into the bullying and discipline properly, we need to consider the mental health of our students and our staff, and the current resources and training, and look at where we need improvement. And it was disturbing that 41 and 1/2% of the student respondents said they're either sometimes or never satisfied with their school's effort to prevent bullying. That's an indicator that we need to do a better job. Either a better job communicating, or a better job responding, I think we need to do both. So what are we providing? Currently, our mental health supports for students include psychoeducational evaluations. Thanks to your board, we now have guidance services in all of our elementary schools, in all of our schools. We have partnerships with the Rutland County Mental Health and Counseling Services of Addison County, with mental health therapists and case managers in all of our schools. We have student support personnel now in all of our buildings. We are partnering with parents, and I'll talk about that a little bit. And then something new up there, this summer, we spent time training all of our administrators and guidance counselors, and then sub-training a select few of those to have a systematic response to threat assessment, so that we can also intervene in bullying and harassment. We also provide our staff with tools. We have had a significant focus on providing professional development around trauma-informed classrooms. Many of our students come to the classroom with trauma experiences in their background or their current life, some of our staff do as well, come to their jobs that way. And the more we can understand that, the better we can serve these students. We annually train our staff on our harassment and bullying policy at each school's level, but this year, we added the bus drivers. They had a full day on harassment and bullying, the interventions that we're putting in place. We revised our bus expectations and clarified for parents that busing is a privilege, not a right, and increasing, clarifying even further what the expectations are for bus behavior, and what might cause a suspension from the bus, and how that can happen. And then also teaching our bus drivers the positive behavior approaches as best we can. We offer a path wellness program and employee assistance programs at no cost to our employees. We are bringing in positive behavior interventions and supports across the district, and this year, again, thanks to our boards, we have a supervised reunion-wide social-emotional coach to support the adults working with students with emotional needs. And as you may recall, this, it did end up being grant-funded. And so, she's already out in the schools and in classrooms and talking to teachers. Lori?
Yeah, so can you talk a little bit more about what her actual role is?
Sure, her role is not direct intervention. We have teachers, guidance counselors, therapists, student support specialists for the direct intervention with kids. Her role is to support the adults who are working with kids with emotional needs, to model, to sit and talk and brainstorm, to develop behavior plans or functional behavioral assessments, those types of things, to help the adults who are working with kids with emotional problems respond in a positive way, and deal with their own anxiety around that. Everybody, you know, teachers and parent educators and our staff, we really want to do well with kids, but sometimes we just come up against overwhelming problems that, I haven't come across this before, how can I deal with this? And that's where Megan can go around and help with that. Derek?
What's Megan's relationship with the PBIS efforts?
She's actually going to coordinate the PBIS efforts in the schools. So we already had PBIS active in Lothrup and Otter Valley. Barstow signed on last year, got their 80% approval rating and started training. Otter Creek Academy got their 80%, you need 80% of the staff to agree. They got their 80%, and they're going through their first phase of training this year. Neshabieh is not calling it PBIS, but it is what they're doing. They have the same behavioral expectations that are clearly identified, positive responses, it's a very similar program. Megan Martin, the social-emotional coach, is going to be our PBIS district-level coordinator, supporting the building-level coordinators and doing data reviews, because with PBIS comes behavioral data that we're able to dissect and analyze further. So she'll be taking on that role as well. She also will be sitting on the threat assessment team as well. So what else can we do? We already have pockets of mindfulness education in all of our elementary schools, but we'd like to make it more intentional K to 12. So the principals have agreed that we're going to move towards making that more intentional K to 12, and bringing in restorative justice practices, which are here at Otter Valley, but they need to be spread out further. Restorative justice is a wonderful approach for remembering that we're working with kids who need to learn both from their mistakes and also learn what behaviors are expected of them. Restorative justice is very strong here in Brandon, and it's been a very nice partner for Otter Valley, for kids who really need to learn from their own behaviors. We also want an intentional focus on adult presence in the hallway. That's part of also adult-student relationship, but it really does decrease the amount of, it's been known by research to decrease the amount of bullying and harassment that occurs in hallways. And then we introduce the kindness rule to all faculty at the convocation. You might, you might know this from your own kindergarten and pre-kindergarten days. It sounds small and trivial, but it's not, it's going to have a huge climate impact. And the kindness rule is that we have challenged everybody, every adult in the district. When you are walking down a hallway and you pass another person, if you're within five feet of this other person, you will smile and greet them by name, and greet them verbally, if you don't know their name, at least verbally. If you are 10 feet away, you will at least smile and greet them, non-verbally. But the point is that we acknowledge that we're all part of the same system, and, you know, it's the first thing we teach our kindergartners really, when they come in, you know, the saying, everything you've learned, you learned in kindergarten? But we forget about it a lot as adults. So our adults will be modeling this for kids, as well as affecting their own adult climate as well. We're asking classrooms to identify greeters, because it's really important, sometimes it's the teacher, sometimes it's other students, but it's really important when you walk into a classroom that you feel welcome, like you belong.
Jean, can I just ask one question?
Yes.
You have PBIS and you have restorative justice, can you just explain, is there an easy explanation about the difference between the two?
Sure, PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, is a framework, it's not a discipline system, it's a framework within which the school identifies, identifies and articulates clearly their expectation for the classroom, the hallway, the lunchroom, the library, the playground, the bus, for whatever environment the kids are in. The kids are taught, explicitly taught, those expectations, and the adults are seeking ways to acknowledge when they see kids living those expectations. So the kids can actually, if you're in a PBIS school, the kids should be able to tell you what those expectations are, and different schools have different ways of acknowledging it. At elementary, it's often giving a token-type thing, at the high school, it's actually putting things into the lottery that they have. But it's, it's not about the token, it's about intentionally, explicitly teaching, intentionally acknowledging, and also changing the behavior of adults, because the adults now have to look for something good, instead of a catch-it-type thing. So that all changes the structure in a positive manner. It also collects, PBIS also clearly identifies what are minor infractions and what are major infractions, and that does have the school set up a consequence system that's appropriate to minor and major, so that it's a system, and keeps data on that. Restorative justice is slightly different, that's more in the consequence world, and, you know, if a, if a child, I can't think of an example, does something that they should not be doing, you could, many of you are parents, you could ground them, punish them, send them to their room, and it may not necessarily change the behavior, it just, sometimes it's necessary, but it just removes the child from the situation for a bit. Restorative justice is really about changing the behavior and finding a way to restore, to fix what you broke, the trust that you broke, the action you took. And often, it means pairing with another adult, it might mean the restorative justice panel in Brandon, it might mean, you know, if you vandalize something, it might mean that you work with a custodian on a Saturday morning to clean it, but it's some type of restorative process. It also might mean discussions. Two kids who are involved in mutual bullying often will bring them together for a restorative conversation. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's on the consequence side of things with an intention of restoring or fixing what's broken. Derek?
Is there, is there a database attached to that, or some trend data that we could monitor?
No, I don't believe so. Now, Otter Valley Union High School, I imagine, keeps track of the kids, they refer to restorative justice, but I'm not sure if they keep track of what they do kind of in school on an ad hoc basis, I can ask. And they're the ones primarily using it right now, we'd like to spread it out a little bit more.
You said PBIS?
It does have a database.
So we can add that to a measurement.
So that, for example, in one of my monitoring reports, I could identify how many major infractions, how many minor infractions, kind of what the board asked for, the old Otter Valley Board had asked for a few years ago, this data system, at least in Lothrup and Otter Valley, and then in the future, the other schools, you have to be at a, PBIS takes you through steps to get there, but then we'd be able to run reports. And internally, I would not run a report like this for the school board, I'm sorry, but internally, we can tell, we could pull a report on John as a student, and say, "I noticed that John ends up in the guidance office or nurse's office every morning at 10 o'clock, what's going on?" And then change things for John, so he doesn't feel like he has to do that. Or a teacher, Bonnie as a teacher, I noticed that her third block has a lot of referrals, so let's send some support in for Bonnie for that third block and see what's going on. So it helps us internally kind of identify where we can provide extra supports for either an individual or a teacher, because the data's now finally there, instead of just our gut saying, "Yeah, it seems like that third block's a tough, tough class," so.
Yes.
Just a quick question on that kindness rule?
Yes.
Which I think is a great idea. How is that being monitored or enforced?
It's being modeled, so the principals actually created the kindness rule as we were going through this data together, that was one of the things they brought forward. They had me present it at convocation, I had a lot of good feedback from it, from staff, and now we just have to live it. So principals are being asked to, you know, watch for it, model it. Yeah. We also, I would like to host an SU-wide parent dialogue night, specifically focused on bullying, harassment, and our discipline policies in general. All of the principals have agreed to attend, and so we would, it would be a present, an educational presentation to start with, but then a panel where questions could be asked and answered, and maybe get rid of some of the mystery around all of this. And I would probably ask PEG TV if they would be willing to tape it, so, because not all parents interested would be able to attend, but we'd really like to get more information out about that. And, again, we're teaching and reinforcing those positive behavior expectations, we're looking at an all-student kindness day across the SU, some type of SU-wide event focusing on kindness, and I'd also like to create, I have to find somebody, a student to help me, but create a student voice video where, you know, you ask a student, "What does kindness mean to you?", and you capture a snippet and pull it together. And again, focusing on those adult-student relationships are a main focus. We're doing a good job overall on our student-adult relationships. I'll show you some data in a minute, and the majority of time, we're doing a great job. We'd like 100% of our students to feel like they have at least one adult that they can connect to, not the majority of students, but we'd like every student to feel like they have somebody they could connect to. So even though this came up as a strength on the overall summary of the student survey, I really do feel that we can do better and shoot for all. So, I purposefully put these graphs, these data points, I put them in the negative. I could reverse them and say, 75% of our students say that they often have good relationships with adults. That's wonderful, 75%! But I chose to capture that 25% say they don't, and that's not okay. 30% are not comfortable participating in class, or feel that teachers aren't interested in hearing them. 36% don't feel they can be themselves at school. 58% of the students who filled out the survey said they sometimes or never enjoy going to school. Not okay. 47% say they always have at least one adult they can talk to. Now, if you added the usually and sometimes, it comes up to 88%, but still, we can do better. 39% feel they don't belong at school, and 32% feel their classmates don't always care about them, or sometimes care about them. So these are all statistics that we think we can get better at, data points. When I went through, this is just a slide to tell you that when I went through this with all the teachers and parent educators at convocation, we stopped for a moment, and I asked them to spend a few minutes talking to each other and writing down some thoughts around these three questions. And I do have a document that just came back to me today, and it, and primarily, the themes that came out of that document, Becky asked me this earlier, are people liked the kindness challenge, people were shocked at the statistics I just told you from the students, they were really surprised because it didn't match what the teachers thought it was, and, or what the employees thought it was, and people had some suggestions of some things that we could do better. So I felt like there was some really strong engagement with the data itself. Parent engagement was the fourth area that we want to grasp onto, and we want to be really intentional with. And so again, that SU-wide parent engagement night is a place to start. Also, we want to increase intentional engagement of parent and student voice. Let's Talk is doing well, I mean, thank goodness Lori knew those answers, apparently, you can't be board chair unless you know the transportation schedule, but, but she did really well. But Let's Talk also now takes texts, so write down the number, it's also on the Let's Talk page, I'm putting it at the end of my reports, but people could just text and not even have to go to the webpage to find Let's Talk if they would like. Also, we're looking to increase our social media presence, tonight's meeting was posted on Front Porch Forum, hopefully in time, but maybe not because of the holiday. And we're looking, we're always looking for ways to increase parent and community volunteering and engagement. Emily?
A couple of years ago, when the Student Achievement Committee was looking at the data about hazing, harassment, and bullying, the numbers jumped really high at Barstow because we educated the students about using Let's Talk. I've been advocating for that for a couple of years, I think it would be beneficial.
Right, so we have talked about that as the principals. Barstow, it was primarily 7th and 8th grade, so it's really Barstow, Otter Valley primarily, although the 4th through 8th graders do have email addresses, 4th through 12th grade. So, we- So we did make an effort to go into our middle school classrooms at Otter Valley last year, the guidance counselors did, and tell them about it, and so we'll do that again this year. School pride? School pride, this is different all across the district. Up and down, every school is a little bit different. And the Otter Valley Board has also been struggling, as you know, most recently with unification, seeing all of us as one district when we're different schools. And school choice plays into that a little bit. So this wasn't a particularly low area, but it kind of goes along with the Otter Valley Board's goal of wanting to develop unification and feeling of belonging to one district even if we are six separate towns. So to that end, we're working with Allison on developing a strategic communications plan, emphasizing school pride, having those one or two SU-wide community events. And then I wanted to note that you're already taking this on and the Barstow Board is also already taking this on. This is all of us doing this together. Then the academic depth, a resounding theme among parents and some staff is that our expectations are perceived as being too low. As we were delving into comments, we recognize that in some cases, that's because a teacher doesn't give homework and therefore academic expectations are too low. Other times, which isn't necessarily a correlation at all, other times, it's really a perception that it's too low or it actually is. And so we want to approach this from a variety of avenues and not shy away from it. So one of the most important things we need to do to make sure that our academic depth is not too low is to dig into data. And those of you who have been on this board for a while, you know, and the Student Curriculum Committee, you know that we've struggled with how do we get beyond the Sback data. The Sback data is not intended to be individual-focused, it's intended to be system. And this district does have a culture of not taking assessments seriously, and it's difficult to know how valid and reliable it is. However, we're looking, we are researching a database system that would pull in the Sback data with our formative assessments that are happening in the classroom to determine, you know, is it valid? Is this the whole child? And what is it that the child needs? So we actually talked to Power School today and watched a demonstration, but we're really close to identifying a data dashboard that teachers would have at their fingertips and they could pull up their class, they could pull up a child, and they can look beyond Sback data and into all the other data pieces as well. And when Beth Ripley retired this year and we replaced her with Jess Morse-Davis, we specifically built into that position time to input data as well. So that we could keep the data current and available for teachers to access. So that's underway. Meanwhile, our schools already do have data teams. And right now, we have different systems. You have to pull fast data for the literacy out by itself. You have the Sback data, which I already said is not always a true indication of what's happening. You have classroom data pieces. But we do have our literacy and math coaches leading our professional learning communities, looking at data. And then principals also each have a data team. Started last year having a data team at their school looking at data. So now we want to give them better tools so they can do it even better. And then we need to really focus on making sure that our teachers are well-trained for a strong first tier of instruction. First tier of instruction is the classroom instruction. That's where all kids are getting instruction. Is that really strong? And then which kids need more than that? That would be a second tier, and then we have a multi-tier system of supports. And you've heard me say this before, that at budget time, that Otter Valley in particular does not have a particularly strong second or third tier of supports. And so that's something that we want to change. And one of the things that we're going to start this year is we've pulled our mental health contracts out of the local budget into our Medicaid grant funds this year, freeing up some money in the local budget. And over the course of this month, my central office leadership team, Kristin, Marsha, and myself, will be talking with principals to say, "How much is that money? And what might we do to beef up your intervention team?" And at Otter Valley, it's fairly significant. So we're going to be, without changing the budget at all, we're going to be seeing what we can do to beef it up. Bonnie?
Jean, just help me understand, and it just may be the way I'm reading it, but it says, when I read that, it says it's the improving people's perceptions of our expectations is what the goal is as opposed to improving our, I mean, so have we?
Improving perceptions and focusing on strong first tier don't really match, right?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, have you been able or do you have the data or whatever you need to dig around and, to answer the question, are our academic expectations high enough?
So that's what the data work is. So that's what I, I'm sorry, I went really fast.
Well, I just may not have understood.
So there are two different things. So the qualitative comments, some of it is clear that in some cases, the feeling that we don't have, the feeling that our academic expectations are too low is related to homework and homework alone. That came out of the qualitative comments. However, other qualitative comments and the part that we really need to dig into, the homework piece is a matter of educating parents. But the act, what we really need to know is what our data tells us. And that's why we're building this data dashboard, and that's why we've already set our data teams in place. Both things.
And the reason I think this is worth focusing on is we need, I think as a district, we need to put this to bed once and for all. As you know, low academic expectations, whether that's true or false, have hounded this district for years. That's all I ever hear is how low our expectations are. And I've been trying to sort out myself, is that just people's expectations of our expectations? Or do we in fact have low expectations of our youngsters?
Right. So.
Angela?
So this is good for like the district-wide and the community around us, but what about college level? I find personally, now that I have a senior, that colleges look at our district as not as high as surrounding towns or surrounding districts.
What's your data source for that?
It's just people that are going into colleges right now. Like they've applied for Ivy League schools and they're like 4.0 GPAs. They're the highest in their class and they can't get in.
That's not always necessarily for that reason, though, because there's different quotas that our Ivy League colleges have, and you might not get in for a whole bunch of different reasons.
Is there a way that we can dig into that and find out why?
Yeah, we do provide, it's a high school profile sheet to the colleges. What we can't dig into. I, for example, had a conversation with a former UVM president and said, "Why is it difficult for me to get kids into UVM?" And he said very honestly, "'Cause you don't pay enough. We have so many seats for in-state and we have so many seats for out-of-state because we want the money." So it's difficult, those things, I mean, he was honest with me, but it's difficult. So instead, the real question is how are our kids doing when we get to college? And we get a one-year-in survey that VSAC does back on our kids. And struggling to figure out how to check with kids. In general, in Vermont, this is not Otter Valley, but in Vermont, the VSAC survey indicates that we get more kids into college in Vermont, but we don't have as high a rate of kids finishing college. What does that mean? Does that mean they weren't really prepared? What does that mean? So it's conversations that we have with colleges, how prepared are our kids when they come to you? It's our relationships with colleges, and our guidance counselors have those. But it, as a parent who just sent her fourth child to college this year, it's how kids get into college is not necessarily how our school is viewed. It's what their particular quota is that they're filling.
That may be true, but the perception around the district is we are not high enough in the academic standards to be able to send our kids to Ivy schools. I mean, I've heard-
Yeah, we do send kids to Ivy schools.
Yeah, some. But I've heard, well, if you compare us to Middlebury, well, Middlebury sends tons and we don't send as many. So it may be just perception, it may be completely wrong data. I don't know, but the perception's there.
Is there any, is there any way through the guidance departments, Jean, that we could, that we could just look at that? I think it'd be an interesting piece of data. I mean, if we took the Mill Rivers and the MSJs and the Otter Valleys, the Middlebury, just surrounding schools that have somewhere.
Sure, we could ask.
Just look at the type.
Everybody reports out, we could.
Yeah, the other thing is, I want to be really clear, that college is not the only goal for a lot of kids. A lot of kids are doing other things.
No, no, it's just one piece of that.
No, I know, you didn't say that. I just wanted to clarify that.
It's also different cultural expectations. If you're in a community where there are a number of family-run businesses, you have a different expectation of some kids than if you're in a community where everybody's a college professor. So how do you tease that out? We do offer the AP classes. We have a number, I think you can also look at the number of kids who do dual enrollment or early college, all those pieces. And then where are we sending our kids? So yes, I could pull the data, I just don't know what the data would tell us.
Yeah, and I don't either. I don't even know if it'd be worthwhile. But I almost think any piece of data is at least worth looking at, to figure out if it tells us anything.
Craig? I know this is all hearsay, what we're doing, but I do want to just say one positive thing because of the conversations I've had with guidance since I have a senior. And that's, and you know, you can talk to Ms. McCartney, but a lot of those elite schools like Middlebury and Cornell and Tufts that we've sent kids to have said very positive things about the kids from the school. And they're always like, "Please send us more." So I think there is a lot of, sorry. There is a lot of positive perception from colleges that get to know us. It's just a matter of them getting to know us.
Right. I also, again, having just sent my fourth child to college this fall, I would also say that I leaned heavily on the Otter Valley Guidance Department in knowing what I needed to do as opposed to the high school that she attends out of this district. I felt I got much better information just from the newsletters going home. "Oh, I need to do this, oh." I mean, honestly. So I think also we have a very strong guidance department in getting kids into college. And we also have an internship position where we get kids internships as well. So let me keep going, if I may. So this is just kind of a summary chart of all the things that we said we would do to focus on these areas. And you have a copy of this and the five areas once again. And then I feel as though my particular role in all of this obviously is working on that chart and working with the principals. But I feel like I also need to continue a very intentional engagement with staff and faculty. I visit schools regularly. I, this year, I'll be attending three faculty meetings a year. Last year, I went to all the elementary schools for one meeting in the last month, month and a half of school, and it went very well just for an open conversation. And they asked me to come back, so I'll be doing that. Also, last year, I began a labor management committee with representation from teacher association, para-bus driver association, and the non-union support staff. And we've been working with a mediator out of the Albany Federal Mediation Services for free. And they helped us set up a labor management committee, which is really focused on working conditions and culture, not contract issues. It's completely separate from contract issues. This is about how do we work together and build a good trusting relationship? And that's taken off very well and will continue this year. And then I also, that committee asked me to make individual connections on a weekly basis with a number of different staff, just randomly, and gather some input. So I'm going to take them at their word and do that. And just a reminder of our kindness rule. And then our desire, our results are to meet our mission and vision for our students. And to do that, we really need to be working as a team. We can't be afraid of the results. The results were not awful. I mean, honestly, 75% sounds great. I want 100%. So we're on a good trend. We can do better. Any final questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Jean, very much. Okay. Moving on, was there anything else in your superintendent's report that you wanted to point out? Okay. All right, so this says global ends monitoring, which is our policy 1.0, that our administrative and great schools partnership will address the board later this year on proficiencies.
And we have a new great schools partnership facilitator this year.
Awesome. Executive limitations monitoring report, policy 2.0. We are supposed to be getting a monitoring report interpretation for 2.4 financial planning and budgeting.
So it's in your packet, and I'll just kind of walk you through it. All you're really doing tonight is looking at the policy itself and my, and kind of discussing or feeling whether my interpretation of what you said is a reasonable interpretation. Ultimately, the interpretation is up to the superintendent. If you feel it's not a reasonable interpretation, you might want to relook at your policy so the policy gives more guidance. However, this discussion will still be helpful to me. And I gave you more than just the interpretation here. I gave you what compliance would look like if I met it, just so that you have a full context. But you'll get the final report next meeting, next month, not September, next month.
Next month.
So this policy is about financial planning and budgeting. I interpret the deviating material, I mean, you can, supposedly you've read this already. So maybe I should just ask if you have any questions along the way on the interpretations?
I have one question.
Okay.
First of all, you guys did a great job again with staying within the budget. But I, just one question I did have, though, is that the budgeted amount and the actual, the actual was slightly over.
Where's that?
So if you look at, so the budget, the budget amount was $19,224,090. Actual was $19,487,541.
Which included-
Maybe this is a, I just, I don't understa-
Why would that be? And that included 11, 1.1 million that you transferred to the reserve funds?
Right.
Okay, so I will, I don't, let me come back to you with that.
Okay.
Actually, this says revenues were that same number down below, so not sure.
So the revenues matched your expenditures, but the budget was lower, so I'll ask that.
Okay.
I'll double-check them out, okay? Thank you, it shows that you read it very carefully.
Could be revenues were higher than what we expected, so expenditures were higher.
Right.
You know, so if our revenues are more-
Within our revenues.
So if our budget is, expenditures is the 19 million, but yet we take in 19,100, then we're going to be, it's going to look like we're over budget by that 100 bucks.
Okay.
But that, I'm thinking that's probably what it is, but I don't know that for certain. Because we're supposed to come to a zero balance at the end of the year. So.
Oh, you're absolutely right. So Matt, if we, if our revenues were the 19,224,090, you would have put less money in the reserve funds to balance it. So the reason that you put more money in the reserve funds is because your revenues were 19,487. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So we did, so, thank you. So we did not overspend the budget, but we had more reserve, more surplus at the end of the year. So actually, we underspent the budget by $900,000.
That's good.
Okay. Other questions for Jean in regards to this first reading? Bonnie, did I see your hand go up?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Well, we'll give everybody a few minutes. We're running ahead of schedule here, so.
Actually, Matt, to back up what I just said, the chart on the last page also speaks to that.
Yeah, I get it now, I do.
Was a great question, though.
It was a great question.
Because we stumped her to begin with, that was a great question.
I'm bothered by the amount spent on the legal fees for the budget.
I was just reading that, too.
That really upsets me personally.
The burden fund for legal fees?
Yeah, where we exceeded.
Oh, yeah, wow. Well, we should finish this and then I'll ask my question.
So the interpretations are reasonable to you? Yep.
Looks good to me.
You're getting the information you would hope to get?
Great. Great. So any other- So any other questions before we move on? No? Okay. So, let's see. Board management delegation, we don't have anything there. Um, we're going, moving into governance process policy four point oh. One of those is the community linkage, which is our board presence at open houses. So Otter Valley's, um, open house was the day before school, which was the twenty-seventh. Um, I saw Derek.
I was there.
And, and I don't think I saw anybody else, but I'm pretty sure there were other people there. I just, I was rounding my own kids.
I was, I was there.
That's what I thought. Um, so the last three open houses are on next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So Tuesday is OCA. They start at Lester at five thirty, um, till six thirty, and then, um, Sudbury's open from six to seven. So that's that one on Tuesday night, which also corresponds to the VSBA training, uh, here at Otter Valley, or the meeting. So I'm gonna try to go to both, and then I'll just miss dinner here.
I'll do the same.
Um, Wednesday is Neshabie from six to seven. They are dedicating the playground at five thirty, their new playground. And Thursday is Lothrip at six o'clock, for an hour. So if anybody can make it to any of those, and it's not required, I'm not telling you all to be there, but if you can stop in, if you have, wanna see what's going on, it'd be a great way to, to, uh, let the teachers, parents, whatever, know that, uh, even if you just chat and say hi and do the kindness rule, five feet, ten feet thing, that, uh, the board was there.
I can do Lothrip.
When was the VSBA thing?
Uh, it's Tuesday night, uh, it starts at five o'clock here. I think dinner here is at five.
I think, is it? I don't know, you got an email.
There's an email, but anyway, so I think it's five o'clock, dinner is here, and then the, the meeting starts at like six. And they're, they're having conversations regarding something. I don't remember, I signed up for it, but I d- do you remember, Derek? Cause I know you've signed up for it.
Oh, I had to sign up.
What their topics are. One of them is about the health insurance, um, initiative, the statewide health insurance. That's one of them, and I don't remember what the other one was.
Um, election of regional-
Snapshot, annual snapshot?
Annual resolutions.
Yes, resolutions, that's the business meeting.
Right, yep, business meeting.
Think a presentation on the annual snapshot meeting.
Okay. So yeah.
I'm just as happy to go to a, an open house, but, um, doesn't matter where I school board that evening, if I'd be better.
It's whatever you'd like to do, really. So I'm, I'm just gonna swing in through both schools quickly and then come here.
Is anybody else going to OCA?
Well, is that one again, can you say?
It's Tuesday night, Lester's at five thirty till six thirty, and Sudbury's from six to seven.
Five thirty at OCA.
Yeah, that'd be great. Cool, thanks. Uh, let's see. Review introduction script and compliance procedures, complaint procedures.
You just wanted to have a conversation about-
Oh, right. That's right. So at open house, um, you know, if someone comes up to you and says something, you know, they're not happy about something. Um, one thing that we, I talked to Val Gardner about, and I think we've talked also amongst ourselves, is that the fact that, you know, you wanna make sure you don't take on the problem like you're going to fix it. So essentially, you wanna make sure that they've gone through their four rules. You know, if it's a problem with a teacher, did they talk to the teacher first? If they didn't, then they should talk to the principal. If that didn't work, you know, go to the superintendent, and then from there, the superintendent can bring it to us and, and go from there. But, um, we really wanna make sure that, you know, we're there, you know, just to say, hey, you know, we want school to be run good, we, we wanna leave everything on a positive vibe. We just wanna make sure that complaints are not, you know, that we're like, oh my god, you know, and, and that we're gonna fix it somehow. Cause we probably can't, honestly. At least not initially.
We probably can't.
Yes.
Um, I heard two things the other day that I think are really helpful for a board. I was doing some board training with another board, and the facilitator said, you can almost guarantee almost a hundred percent of the time, when someone who's passionate about something has sought you out, you're never gonna get both sides of the story. You're gonna get the side of the story that, that really they believe. And it's not that they're telling any mistruths, it's just that's their perception, that's their belief. So understand that you're not getting both sides of the story. And then as a board member, try and remember that your role is to facilitate a solution for that, whatever the, the grievance is the person's feeling, not create the solution yourself. And by facilitating, he clarified that it meant, you know, go to the principal, I don't wanna talk to that person. Well, then the next person will be the superintendent, call them, well, they don't listen to me. Well, I'll make the call, I'll go with you, I'll help you, I'll say whatever, blah, blah, blah. But don't try and craft the solution. Just try and understand that our job is to facilitate that person getting some sort of forum where they can get their concern addressed, and we're not it.
Perfect, thank you. Um, so I think that's, I just wanted to review that. You know, other than that, you can introduce yourself, you know, hi, I'm whoever, I'm, on the OVU board, you know, whatever. Um, so we already talked about the Let's Talk Communication report. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention that, uh, I spoke at Convocation, um, to tell them about the RNESU and OVUU, what we had done at our retreats. Um, I'm very happy to say that we got five people who said that they would like to consider being ambassadors for us. So, which is very awesome, I think. Um, so they, I will be personally inviting them to our next meeting on the eighteenth, because our September eighteenth meeting is supposed to be essentially about task force stuff. So they'll be here to ta- you know, visibility, uh, talk about the visibility and class size policy. They'll be able to help us craft how we wanna get the message out and, um, next steps. So I'm also hoping that we can be at the Community Harvest Fest, which is October sixth. It is a Sunday. Um, I will reach out to Bill Moore if you guys think that that would be a beneficial, um, thing to do. I'm thinking that at our meeting on September eighteenth, maybe we could craft some questions so that we have something to talk about at that table. Um, I would like to do that, actually. Yes, sir?
Do we have like a table banner or something to make it look a little more professional than just standing in front of a-
Oh, we have an RNESU banner.
We could do, we could use that, though.
Yeah.
Might be easier to help communicate.
No, and we could probably have an OVUU one before October sixth. That would be cool. So last year, we did, you know, we did do a survey last minute at Harvest Fest. I think it went over well, but I would like to do it again, but with different questions. And we can craft those at our next meeting if everybody is on board with that. Hearing no complaints, I'm gonna say okay. Um, and then work plan development review. I think we've pretty well done that, didn't we pretty much do that?
Yep.
Um, at our Otter Val- or at our retreat?
Yeah, you just look at it each meeting to see if there's anything to change. But next meeting is focused entirely around tax for- task force action steps. Allison will be with us. Um, you're inviting the people interested in being an ambassador. I sent you some verbiage to put on Facebook pages to encourage more people to be ambassador. I have questions about that.
Yeah. Do you wanna ask them now?
I do.
Awesome.
Okay. Um, tweet number one said OVUU is considering a number of blah, 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 shifting school boundaries. I thought that we had- I know. I thought that we had-
We nixed that, yeah.
So the fact that it says is considering-
Wait, where did it say that?
It was in the article in the paper today.
It just, it just came out. That's true, and that's such good, because I was very clear. I think I said it six times at Convocation, in a row. We are not, we are not.
Could you let me revise those tomorrow? Cause I revised it when I put them in that newsletter, so I should revise yours, too.
Okay.
So I'll revise your tweets.
I read the article, okay, no school boundary shift, and then read that message.
We don't need that.
Right, we don't need to add to that.
That's why I skipped, cause like, why did I not read that, but I don't have Twitter.
Um, she's revising some social media posts that, that, uh, Allison had put together. So we're gonna revise those and, and try again. Okay. Anything else? No? Okay.
Um, but-
Yes?
Banners and, are we getting name tags as school board members? It was recently, I went to the football game this weekend, and Derek's got, you have, you have your-
We have those cards, but we can't just fill it.
On your shirt? Oh, no.
We'll just put a card on our shirt, there you go.
I have them right here.
Handing out our business cards.
Awesome. Here we go, that's right, maybe we could, maybe we could get sweatshirts that say, "Board member." No, I'm just kidding. That's why-
I've seen some boards, um, another district made for their boards, just like this simple little gold name plate that says, you know, OVUU board member and your name.
Nice, a name tag.
Heck, Derek, we're having a difficult enough time just getting you a name plate for the table.
I know.
All this information makes it look really official.
Yeah, it does, actually.
It's not that bad.
You know, if you had one of those pocket protectors, then you'd really look good.
Yeah, and one of those, that would look good.
Well, we could certainly get you, um, you know what we could do is we could-
We're getting punchy, it's not even late.
Oh, that would be cool, actually, name badges would be awesome.
I think it would be helpful for, um, open house, and I would just say, keep it simple.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
I would, I would vote for just keep it simple, just say, OVUU board member Angelo Olet.
Yeah.
And what?
Angelo Olet, just her name.
OVUU board member Angelo Olet.
Right, yeah.
Three and fourteen of those, OVUU board member Angelo.
Yeah, we can, I'll be Angela.
No, I don't wanna everybody be like-
Hi, I'm Angela, no, I'm Angela.
No, I'm Angela.
Yeah, work plan still says, uh, the eighteenth is to be determined, is here, right?
It is going to be here.
The eighteenth will be here. The first meetings of the month will also all be here, because RNESU is meeting here right before them.
I mean the third one.
No, I mean, do I mean the third one?
You do, you do mean the third one.
The third one.
The third one.
It just happened to be tonight.
Second meeting of the week, right.
So it's the first meeting that'll rotate.
Yep.
And I'll get that scheduled out to you.
Um, the other thing I will mention to you is that I did talk to Stephanie Jerome, um, recently. She is very excited to bring her butch and Cheryl Hooker, who is a Rutland County Senator, um, to come to talk to us in January, just before the, the, um, yeah, or just before the, the whole thing starts, their session starts up there. So I just wanted to, we'll put that on the calendar at some point, but wanted to let people know that. Okay. Is there anything else that we need to discuss tonight, before I let you go?
Does it want the January eighth?
Good, maybe, nice.
Uh, yeah, I think so, or January fifteenth, maybe, cause it won't, don't we have two? So we might, closer, we might know that more.
Cause they'll be just getting geared up then, right?
Yes, yep. Okay. Hearing, um, no other discussion come forward, I would entertain emotion. Okay. All right, there we go, and we're at rap at seven oh five?
Wow.
Seven oh two.
Seven oh two, and she left, I-
No, I was like, where's she, she snuck out.
Are we supposed to fill out these self-evaluations?
Oh, yeah, you should, yeah, fill them out, yeah.
So I can email you a link tomorrow, or you can do-